We'll call this meeting to order and announce their forums present. We have our workshop session begin. 2015 legislative update presented by Mr. Kunkie and Mr. Solomons.
Thank you, Councilor. I do have Mr. Solomons here with us. You might recall that he formerly represented parts of Lewisville in the Texas House of Representatives. And what we're going to do is I'm going to very quickly walk you through the draft legislative agenda document, show you what's in there, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Solomons to give you some feel for what this legislative session has in store for us. It's always such a delight when the legislature's in session. And did that come out sarcastically? Well, it's on tape, too. But then also to answer questions you might have. I'm not going to be able to answer a lot of your questions on specific topics in terms of how they're going to be handled, but Bert can do that. What I can do is answer questions if you haven't about why they're in here. So as we go through this, I just want to hit the calendar for you first. Prefiling started last week, and over the past several sessions, the number of sheer number of bills filed has continually grown by almost exponentially, but certainly large growth every year. It's probably going to happen again this year. There already were 300-plus bills filed when prefiling opened. Now, most of those will never amount to anything, but that's a lot of material for us to dig through. The session convenes January 13th. A reminder, the February 23rd and 24th is Denton County days. I think you've been contacted about that already. That's when the chamber to Denton County take a group up or down to Austin and meet with legislators. We usually try to have special meetings then with legislators who oversee committees where we're going to have key material issues presented. So that's coming up in February. March 13th is the deadline for final legislation, except for certain instances, emergency appropriations and so forth. June 1st is the end of the session, as we've seen in recent years. That doesn't mean it's the end of the legislative term. They have special sessions that can be called, but June 1st is the end of the legislative session. June 21st, the governor signs it or vetoes it by that day. And then August 31st, bills that are on the specific date in the law will then become law August 31st. So it seems like we're a long ways off from some of this, but it sneaks up on you. And prefiling has begun, so we're in the middle of it now. As we talk about the legislative agenda we're presenting to you tonight, a lot of this came from our agenda two years ago and from comments and issues council has brought forward, or comments and issues that your department directors have brought forward. And then a lot of the language comes also from the TML legislative document. Theirs is far larger than ours, goes into a lot of detail, a lot of areas that really just don't affect Lewisville directly. So ours is smaller, but we think much more targeted to the city of Lewisville and its residents. You'll see that there's three different ways we can approach it. We either pursue legislation, which is when we work with our legislative representatives to draft something and actively work for its passage. There's one of those that we're looking at for this year. Couple other topics that have been discussed, we'll get to that shortly. Then other than that, we would support or oppose legislation. And that would mean communicating with our local legislators through email, letters, phone, picking up the call, picking up the phone and talking to Representative Simmons or sending an email to the chair of some committee. It also can mean legislators outside of our area. And in some cases, it means sending down a representative of the city for expert testimony, whether it be the police chief, municipal judge, a council member, going to speak at one of those hearings so that we are on the record of voicing our position. That doesn't happen with great frequency, but it does happen several times every session, and we would expect it to happen again. Little note there, in recent years, opposition has been much more necessary than support. In other words, there's been a lot more bills that we felt would harm the city than there have been bills that we felt would help the city. So we would love to support a whole bunch of stuff. The chances are, we're probably going to wind up opposing quite a bit of stuff. We have one critical issue. That's the one we're going to actually pursue legislation, and that's regarding local input on state permitting for landfills. An issue that grew out of the Castle Hills, pardon me, Camelot, the Camelot landfill application for an expansion of that landfill. Any legislative relief here will probably not affect that particular permit that would be moving forward. And then we have six major topics where we've grouped everything into these categories. Local authority, that's the city government gets to run the city without the state telling us in all cases how to do that. Local revenue, that's protecting the revenue streams we have now, so we can continue to provide services our residents say they want and expect. Parks funding, broken out separately, and it's often treated separately at the local level and at the state level. So we have some specific items under parks funding. Public safety, we believe the state can be of great help in public safety in our community, but at times, the state can actually create obstacles for us. And so we want to try and take advantage of the help without those roadblocks. Transportation, with 35 being a major element of Lewisville and the construction of 35 being something we have to deal with for the next four years, and then a phase two coming after that, transportation certainly warrants its own category here. And then water. The old westerns, water's what they always fought over, the sheep herders and the ranchers and the settlers, they fought over water. We're still fighting over water today, not necessarily with sheep and cattle, there is some, but not around here. But water's still a major issue, and so we've got to list it as a separate topic. Now, on the landfill, in particular, the way we're framing this, under the current arrangements, when TCEQ considers a permit application for a landfill, they tell us they are specifically prohibited from considering input from the municipal government where the site is located. So when they're looking at the Camelot landfill, and we tell them all the issues we have with it, that does factor into their decision-making. Now, we are working, along with Carrollton and along with Bert, we're working with Representative Simmons to try and introduce legislation. In fact, I'm told he filed a bill today. I don't have a copy of that, but he did file a bill today, so we'll have more information shortly. That would require them to consider that input, and at the very least, allow them to consider that input in the decision-making process. That would be a big step for us if they at least are required to look at what we say and consider it at some point.
This is the same bill that we filed at the end of the session, last session?
Yes, correct. And that actually was an amendment on another piece of legislation, I believe. This would be a standalone bill.
It's the same language.
Yes. We need to look at the bill that was filed today. Representative Simmons' office had a couple of different pieces of legislation they were looking at, and I'm not sure which one was filed. Well, I'll find out tonight or in the morning, and we'll let you know what the status is. But this is one that we believe is important enough for Lewisville that we're going to actively work toward passage of something that would allow us to have a voice. We have three landfills in Lewisville. This is a big deal for us, to at least have our input considered by TCEQ. Again, not going to affect the Camelot permit that's already under consideration, but if we get it approved through the legislature and signed by the governor, it would affect future applications, if any. I will say that we don't expect TML support on this one, because anytime there's a situation that might have a city versus city implication, TML stays out. And in this case, as we know, Camelot is owned by Farmer's Branch, and it's in Lewisville. And that situation might exist elsewhere. TML most likely going to stay out of this one, but we feel like we've got a strong case and a strong team to be able to push this forward.
James, are there any models for where an entity like a TCEQ takes that information into consideration?
I'm not able to answer that question. Bert might have an answer for you.
Okay. My first thought on that is, okay, you have to take it into consideration. Well, how? How would they take it into consideration? Would they weigh it? Is there a, I know the legislation is not to get to that level of detail, but I could see where that's going to be a question of, well, how do you do that?
It depends on which legislation was filed. There's been discussion about having a bill that actually would require them to take it into consideration. There actually was talk about a bill that would say if the local city doesn't approve it, you can't approve it. I doubt that's what was filed, but I just can't say for sure until I look at that legislation.
I don't know of any other particular areas where there's a situation exactly like that. I think I was looking at Bert.
The TCEQ doesn't really want, really doesn't want to have to deal city by city. And so they really don't have that in place. It's usually a streamlined process through TCEQ. The interesting issue will be what meetings that we have, if we, Representative Simmons, maybe Representative Parker, maybe Senator Nelson's people, you know, we get Senator Huffines involved, we get several, you know, some folks involved in talking to TCEQ to see if we can come up with some sort of legislation based on what Ron has probably filed that we could live with, and it wouldn't be blocked by the chairman of the various committees that deal with TCEQ. That's what happened last time. It was really blocked by the chairman.
Yeah. I was there.
Because TCEQ said it was a bad deal for them. They just didn't want to do it. And they convinced, they had convinced the chairman, the chairman that we can't be doing this on piece deal around the state of Texas.
Thank you.
Now, this is the only topic right now where we are going to propose and pursue legislation. There might be another, but we'll talk about that in about three slides. So as we go into the categories, the first category is local authority. Again, our emphasis there primarily is maintaining the authority we already have, not have it preempted by state action. We've got six bullets there. One's about public rights away, making sure we maintain control, including charging a fair market value for use of public rights away. Another is maintaining the ability to participate in utility rate cases. Might be something Bert wants to talk on when he gets up here. That's something that right now is running through the, through the state agency, through Railroad Commission. There could be some legislative discussion on this, but there are some efforts being made by some of the utility companies to say that, to reduce the amount of local government input in those rate cases. The ability to restrict CHL handguns on municipal property, there's already been bills filed that would take that away. Strengthening our ability to regulate placement of pipelines and drilling sites. That'll be a tough one, but at the very least, want to maintain what authority we do have. Revising or eliminating outdated print advertising mandates. There already has been two bills filed that would do this, that would allow electronic filing. One of them is just local, and one of them is the comptroller's office will set up a website. We would send everything to the comptroller's office, and they'd post it on their website. And then we'd have to publish, oddly enough, in the print publication for consecutive issues, where you find it. And then after that, there'd be no more print requirements on legal notices. Some of this has been discussed for several sessions. There might be some momentum this time. And then also state legislation on exploitative payday and vehicle title lending. And there's already been four or five bills filed on this topic. And I know that's a topic that Bert will talk about when he gets up. On the opposition side, basically taking away authority that exists, authority over land uses, authority over reasonable business regulations, changes to the two dates per year for local elections, and less is to give us more flexibility, but reducing it from two to one is not something we would support, it's something that cities as a group would oppose. Mandating or expanding meet and confer or collective bargaining or civil service law for city employees. And then any further erosion of local control on retirement issues for our employees. We believe that we're the ones that hire them, we're the ones that care about their well-being, their productivity, and their viability, and we better, we know better than a state organization or a state agency how best to take care of those employees. Local revenue, these first two could wind up being active pursuit of legislation issues. Right now, they're not, and I'll explain that. The first one talks about extending certain revenue options, like a transit tax or a hotel tax into the city's ETJ. In fact, we do have a DCTA rep. I guess you're always a DCTA rep, aren't you?
Seems to be.
Seems to be. Right now, the DCTA sales tax is not collected in Castle Hills. They were not a part of the group that voted for the DCTA sales tax. In talking with Jim.
Tim Klein.
Jim Klein, thank you. I was about to say Jim Bright. I was throwing my names together.
No, we did get a draft. I don't know if you want to talk about that at all, but we did get a draft, and we have not met on that at all to date. I just saw it yesterday, that would allow an election to be held and the ETJ to expand that sales tax. And there's certain benefits for Castle Hills, I think, related to that. One would be ELAP funding of roads potentially in the future. And then obviously, the expansion of rail towards Castle Hills, it might escalate that. Do you want to speak to that at all?
Donna, we just got the, did you get the Ledge Council version of that?
Yes.
Just came back.
Yeah, I saw that yesterday.
Because there were some changes in there by Ledge Council. No, that's, that's, most of it, I mean, there's some pieces in there about our limitation and condemnation and that kind of stuff, so.
But we are exploring that, but it's early right now. So we'll be getting back with you on a report on a recommendation on whether we should move forward with supporting that type of legislation.
And this one and the one after it both depend in large part on whether the water district will support it. If they are not in support, if they are going to oppose it, we don't feel like that's a fight that we're in a position to take on. So that's going to be part of the discussion also. But in general, we are going to support these items, and we would support if there's legislation out there to extend voter-approved sales taxes, such as crime control and fire prevention, into a city's ETJ.
Now, of course, once it's annexed in, it just naturally, they'll be naturally paying it that way, right?
I'm not for sure about DCTA. I don't think so.
It'd be an election.
Yeah, DCTA, it's still an election.
Still that being an election, yes.
Yeah, I believe on crime control and fire control, the answer to that would be yes. But as long as it's in our ETJ, the comptroller's office has told us we can't collect. Now, we've had some conversations with the district, but I don't have clear direction that they would support or changing the law. And there's no point in really pursuing that if they're not going to support this. So we're still in conversation.
And you might recall.
That's an election in Castle Hills. I'm sorry, it's not a city.
Right.
Brett? You might recall with the limited annexation for sales tax purposes, we're collecting sales tax, but it's the base sales tax and the 4B sales tax, but not the crime control, not the fire prevention, not DCTA.
Correct.
This would be an effort to change that. So these might become pursue issues if the Castle Hills group is in favor of them or is willing to support them. Right now, they're on the support list. So that's where you could see a change in the agenda based on what we find out over the next, you know, few weeks or couple of months. And the third one there is to expand allowable uses of peg fee revenue. Now, frankly, that's more of a federal issue than a state issue, but right now, peg fees, that's the additional 1% that's collected on cable bills. And the FCC, and then through them, the state, only allows those to be used for capable projects. So what you have is some cities in Texas and elsewhere that have these wonderful new studios and all this great high dollar, I mean, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment, and nobody to run them. So there are a number of cities that are trying to get the FCC to loosen that up, and some work on the state level also, to allow other uses for the peg fees, still related to cable, but not strictly equipment. On opposition, again, it's opposing anything that takes away what we have now, redirecting local revenue to the state, increasing or expanding appraisal caps, increasing, should be reducing. I have to change that wording. There already is legislation filed to change the appraisal cap from 10% to 5%. Multiple bills to do that. And then the county appraisal district could have an election to move it back up, the public election, but going it down to 5%, and we would oppose that move, as does the Texas Municipal League. Erode local taxing authority, anything that would restrict existing revenue streams. An example of that is some of the, what you'll see is truth and taxation language to be added to ballots for bond issuances. And it would require to, some of the bills already filed would require a whole bunch of additional information on the ballot. The ballot proposal would basically be three or four paragraphs long in some cases, because it has to list what your current debt is, and how long it's going to take to pay it, and what your proposed new debt is, and what it actually, the repayment would be based on an estimated interest rate over an estimated term, and what the impact is on the tax rate, and a whole lot of numbers, many of which are just variables that you can't pin down very easily. And the intent, at least in many of these cases, the intent is to make it more difficult for cities to issue debt to do major projects.
And we'll see a lot of bills filed along those lines.
Yes. We already have seen a number of them, and there will be even more.
Yeah, the outside groups are pushing that.
Very much so. Anything that would erode the concept of true market appraisals, any more than have already been eroded. Increase the reallocating state fees from municipal court fines. I don't think the judge is here, but he's really paying attention to this one. There's already been some discussion outside of the legislative process about eliminating some of the court fees that are currently charged, or possibly redirecting those fees to the state level. And that would have an impact on cities. He's working on some documentation that you had asked about. He's working on that. Anything that would permanently eliminate sales tax for online transactions, that's going to be a topic. It has been the past several terms. And then expanding or creating new sales tax exemptions, including the sales tax holiday. There's already been multiple bills filed on this. One, for example, for the opening of dove season, that weekend, you'd have no sales tax on firearms or supplies related to hunting. Why hunters need that boost, I don't know. The hunters I know have already invested thousands of dollars and couldn't care less. But nevertheless, anything that would decrease our current ability to fund services would be an issue. Parks funding, a lot more support here. And basically, we're supporting anything that would adequately fund an operation and maintenance of state parks and rec areas, expand state and federal funding for local parks, looking at a constitutional dedication of sporting goods sales tax revenue for use in state and local parks. That's already been proposed in current prefiled legislation. It's going to be a tough road, but it's been filed. Including parks and rec agencies as eligible partners for programs that are doing healthy lifestyles or conservation, preservation. And Bob might have more information on this, but essentially, right now, there are funding programs that provide state grants and, or federal money for healthy lifestyles and conservation and preservation, great things, but local parks and recreation agencies are not considered an eligible partner for those, and yet we do a lot of healthy lifestyles and conservation and preservation. We're not saying give it to us first, we're saying give us equal treatment. Let us be at the table to at least apply for these things. Restoring full funding to the local park grant program, it's a program that already exists, but the funding's been diverted. Expanding park and rec opportunities in utility corridors, which TML language would include waiving liability for the utility companies that allow that to happen, so that they don't, you don't put a park down the middle of their easement, and all of a sudden, something happens, and they're the ones that have the financial liability because you allowed a park in the middle of their easement. And then finally, increasing local access to pass-through federal funding for parks and related uses. It's really about increasing the funding level that's available for parks and recreation. And it says in legislative agenda, it points out that parks not only are a feel-good thing, they have an economic impact that's been documented, and if they have a good positive economic impact, we need to recognize that with funding. On the negative, anything that's opposite of those. That's an easy slide. You're really going to say that on every slide we've had. Public safety, and some of these came from Chief Kerbo and from his association also, and some of these were carried over from last time. Statewide prohibition on texting while driving. Actually, it was passed by the legislature last year and vetoed by Governor Perry. Adequate funding for state law enforcement on public lakes. Right now, I believe we have one Parks and Wildlife boat that's on our lake every other week, because we share with another lake. We have 3 million visitors a year. That should at least have one boat all the time, and maybe more. They shouldn't just leave it to us. It's their lake, they tell us the rules, they should enforce some of those rules. Ending the redirection of dedicated telephone taxes, anything other than 911. You see a lot of redirection issues. And again, it could be a tough fight, but they're worth looking at. I took the exact wording from TML on this one, because I didn't, there's no way to shorten it. Making it an offense, this would be supporting, to make it an offense for a person to post on a publicly accessible website, the residential address or telephone number of an individual the actor knows is a public servant or a member of the public service family or household. So for one of Russ's officers, if I'm a member of the public and I'm mad at Officer Smith, and I put his address and phone number on the internet so people can harass him, that would become a criminal offense to have done that. And yes, that does happen. Sadly, it does. And then finally, clarifying municipal authority to enact residency restriction on registered sex offenders. The state has pretty much left that open to the cities, and the cities have taken 100 different approaches to it. A little bit of statewide clarity would probably be a very helpful thing. And on the opposition side, legalizing recreational use of marijuana in Texas, it's kind of a growing thing, and eventually, the discussion will come to Texas, although being the reddest of red states, it might be a while, but it can happen. This is one that already has been filed. Subjecting local police to criminal charges for enforcing federal firearms laws, or subjecting a city to punitive funding reductions, or a state filed lawsuit for allowing that enforcement. In other words, if the federal government says, here's the law, here's the rule, you have to enforce it, there are bills already filed that would say, if the legislature decides that's an unconstitutional federal law, Russ's guys can't enforce it. If they do, that's a crime, and if we let them, that's bad for us, too. Our thought is, let the officers do their job. Transportation, the first one is probably a long-term plan. We'd love to be a shorter-term plan, full and timely funding for the second phase of 35E, let's get that thing done. Increase state funding to build and maintain a high-quality, efficient highway system, ending the diversion of transportation revenue to non-transportation. There's no other ending the diversion. Increasing state investment in public transit, including regional rail service, allowing greater flexibility for cities to fund local transportation projects, including possible new funding from the state, that'd always be a nice thing. Here again, you see it repeated, because we think it's important, protecting our authority over public rights away, including fair compensation for their use. There's been legislation filed in past sessions that would eliminate that compensation, even though the state constitution says we can't let somebody make a profit on our land without charging them fair market value. That legislation keeps coming up that would say, let them do what they want in those rights away, they're public. And we feel like there's a different interpretation. And then voluntary complete streets, we would support, saying to cities, if you want to do complete streets, we encourage you to do that, and in fact, we'll provide funding. That'd be a great thing to add. Complete streets is when it's not just the street, but it's also the bikeway and the pedestrian improvements, and just everything that goes with a full, full-access intermodal transportation of a road.
Keyword there is voluntary, not mandatory.
Yes. In the opposition slide, mandatory. We would not support if the state mandates it, especially since if they mandated it, I'm guessing there'd be no funding attached. Just guessing.
Have they had those bills?
They have been passed. They have been proposed in the past. Last one, water. Supporting research and act, researching and assessing some level of water reuse, keeping water conservation standards at the local level, not state or federal. And there have been efforts in the past to make those statewide matters. We just think it's better at the local. Our water use is different from Dallas's, and it's different from Denton's, and it's different from Keller's. Our use is lower than many of them. We don't need to have as strict of a requirement. Right now, in Plano, they're back to once every two weeks to water your lawn. We don't feel like we need that at this time, and we feel like local government is the one that knows what the local community needs. We should keep that authority. Fully funding the state water plan, creating future funding sources, and then identifying and securing options for new water sources in Texas. And we would oppose state tap fees or other state fees on municipal water systems. Those would wind up being fees the state collects, and our customers have to pay, and there's no benefit to anybody except the state got more money. That's the benefit. And then anything that would restrict our ability to provide a safe and reliable local water supply. That's pretty vague, pretty broad. It's one of those you-know-it-when-you-say-it type bills. We would oppose anything that would interfere with our ability to provide that very basic service. So that's my time. I will let you know, by the way, this 14 pages right here, these are city-related bills that have been filed already in just a few days. So it's going to be a busy session, and I'm going to let Bert tell you how busy and how we're going to survive it.
I might interrupt just a moment and say that if there are issues here that we're saying support or oppose, and you're in disagreement, we want to hear from you tonight about that.
We'll have to bring this back for council approval, won't we?
We have not in the past.
Have we not? Okay. Never mind. I didn't say that.
So could we have more time to take a look at those?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Than to make a decision?
You don't have to make a decision tonight. You know, the agenda, the legislative agenda develops as you go through, if there's anything I'd like to hear from you about whether some of these issues you are in opposition, you know, we're saying support, but if you wouldn't like us to bring it back at a later time.
No, I don't need to bring it back, I just need more time to look specifically.
Absolutely, yeah, if you could just give me any minute.
That'll be fine.
Yes, one other question, as I look across different bills that are essentially targeting the same objective but have different variations on a theme, are you interested in my preferences or lack thereof?
I'm always interested in your preferences and interests as all of you, so please, you know, as we go through the session, what I will do, TML actually sends out a very good report on all the bills that are introduced and I'm going to start forwarding that to you. So don't feel like staff is reviewing it very carefully, but I would like you to have that information too. So if you see bills that you have particular interest in, if you'll give me a call or James a call, we'll follow up if we're not already doing so.
Thank you.
The good news is most bad ideas are filed every session, die every session, but the bad news is sometimes some get through and that's probably the case in every legislative session, it's probably going to be the case this time as well. You've got about 57 days left before session starts, first ceremonial day, and I just wanted to cover a few topics before I kind of open up for questions if that's okay with you guys, because I do think it's important, even when I was a member, I thought it was important for people to know what the political landscape is because it affects what you're going to see at the legislative level. This session, we've got, we'll go in, we'll go in the session with a surplus, some amount, five, six million, five or $6 billion surplus, which there's just been this big call for tax relief and we'll see what happens with that. But I think most of the members, especially the 98 Republican House members and the 20 senators now, Republicans have all been running primary, you know, primary campaign issue is property tax relief. And so we'll see what that means in context of local government because what often happens is that when we give property tax relief, something happens at the local level that forces increases at the local level. We're in a growing state. I'll go into something in a minute, but we've got about, we've got a new governor, new statewide officials up and down the line, it's a lot of shifting going on with staff, a lot of shifting going on with ideas. You had 371 bills filed on the first day, most of which dealt with handguns, who else was it, handguns and immigration and tax cuts. Not all of them, some had to do with gay marriage and other bills, but you know, most of those bills aren't going to really, you know, they're by themselves are just going to fly through just because they were filed, but a lot of members feel it's important to file on certain issues, especially hardcore issues, political issues, file wide away, get out there and get your name on that and get some press and media out of it because when you file early, that's what the press basically looks at. And then they start weeding through what they want to basically discuss. There is this, there is this concern going on in Austin right now about uncertainty. Most everybody, most businesses, cities, counties, school districts, everybody, they all, if you deal with the legislature at a session coming up, you'd like a little certainty, you know, some sort of certainty, some sort of predictability. And right now, with everybody kind of changing hands except Joe Strauss in the Speaker's office, it seems like there's this sense of unpredictability and lack of certainty. And right now, the bright spot seem to be the House, they may, they may turn out to be the adults in the room, who knows? The governor's office is sort of a bright spot generally, but it's an unknown, Greg's been around a long time, a lot of people feel comfortable, he's pretty much going to do what's best for the state and the governor's office has to kind of have a pretty broad view. The uncertainty is in the Senate, we've got a new lieutenant governor, we've got a bunch of new senators, the legislature of this session always has different dynamics and this session, we're going to be even more conservative in tone than ever before. I mean, and so when you're starting to look at some of these issues like tax cuts, appraisal caps, some of these issues are very, very, they have a lot of concern for a lot of people in city government and local government, county government and school districts, they're all concerned with it. Not necessarily that it's all bad, it's just that they're concerned, there's this uncertainty of what's going to happen. And for those of you who keep track of minutia, the two-thirds rule in the Senate has held up for years and years, years, it was done back in the 50s, I think, 50s or 60s. And Dan Patrick has for, since he came in, before he came in, he campaigned about doing away with the two-thirds rule. Well, there is a sense that they may be doing either away with the two-thirds rule or change that minimum threshold to get bills on the floor in the Senate and also to reduce the number of Democratic chairs, of which a lot of Democratic chairs are coming back, we've just got a whole lot of new Republican chairs, I mean, a lot, a whole lot of new Republicans coming in the Senate. And so there's this, from day one, we don't know what's going to happen, we're not sure yet, everything's pretty closed, that lieutenant governor is trying to, I think, trying to come up with some system that meets his needs or what he feels is necessary. I will say that whether Letitia Van De Pew had won as a Democrat or Dan Patrick winning, this is the first sitting senator to be elected lieutenant governor since the 60s. So there is some experience level that Dan has and he's been around the Senate long enough to understand some of the dynamics or most of the dynamics and we'll see how it comes out. Right now, the uncertainty is really in the Senate, nobody really knows what will happen, whether it'll melt down early, whether it'll melt down in normal time, because it melts down. What happens is generally, if you think about it on a brick wall, you know, as time goes by, the bricks start kind of falling off on the sides and you have to replace the bricks and stuff. Well, the session, usually around appropriations time, crumbling starts to be more noticeable and then in April, May, it just falls apart and there's a lot of tension between the two bodies. We don't know yet because of the uncertainty of the Senate, whether or not those building, those bricks are going to start crumbling any earlier. And it may be, if it just happens in the Senate, it still affects legislation because you got to pass legislation, not just in the House, not, thank goodness, not just in the Senate, thank goodness, got to pass it in both houses. And basically have to get the governor's agreement that he's not going to veto it if you, if you can get that. Sometimes they won't show their hand on certain pieces, but they, you know, usually the governor's office is pretty involved in legislation and Greg's been around state government a long time, I think he's going to do just like Perry did and be involved in a lot of legislation, especially the budget. Budget's probably going to be different, a little bit, it's going to be more conservative. Senator Nelson has proclaimed it to be a new day, that they're looking at different ways to look at how they do the budget, she's been on finance for a number of years, she's a very powerful member and she's got a lot of legislative experience now, which is good for us because she represents us in the Texas Senate. Just some statistics so you'll know, in 2014, there are 27.2 million people, voting age is 18.9 million, registered voters 14 million, governor's race are 4.7 million voters, Texas is considered a low turnout state. The demographics are Anglo's are 44%, Hispanics 38%, African-Americans 12%, Asian 4%, Native American 1%. The state is changing, we've got 1,000 people a day moving in, we've got, it's just, it's changing, everybody who's lived here all their lives, like I have almost, it's changing, the state has changed, it's much more urban, it's, the demographics are changing dramatically, faster and faster and it puts, it puts a strain on state government. We have so many issues, just like this city has, transportation, infrastructure, just revenue, just what do we do to, you know, to be able to provide a quality of life, you all want to provide for assistance in Lewisville and all over the state and the cities. It's become an urbanized state and you've got rural members who are going to be feeling like they're left out, you've got, you've got Democrats in certain terror cities that are concerned about where they stand. All this goes in a big mix during sessions and it's all dealt with in various pieces of legislation one way or the other and that's why sometimes out of the blue, you'll get somebody voicing concern about a piece of legislation everybody thought was fine and it turns out it's affecting their group in this demographic. Text off, we did do Prop 1, I will say on transportation, I know we're concerned about it, but it's a bob and weave syndrome this time. Texas passed Prop 1, you all know how it works, so I'm going to get into that, but it goes to diversions as well. But also, the members are going to have to see what appetite they have to actually come up with monies to handle other issues. In a political environment which is very, very conservative and talk about diversions and where you're going to have monies, when you give up monies one place, you may need it somewhere else, like education. Vehicle sales taxes, all or a portion of those are being talked about as far as providing new revenue sources. There are a lot of members who believe that with Prop 1, a good amount of diversions and cutting elsewhere and also vehicle sales taxes, you can get pretty close to the $4 or $5 billion you need for revenue for transportation. All of you in this room know that, and Charles knows, he's heard this before in the past, you don't build a road in a day, you know, or in a year, it takes a while to get roads built. And so as we get some more, if we get some more money in the state, we'll be able to prioritize in that money and whether or not, when you can start up. I mean, you can start maintaining pretty quickly, but building new roads takes a while. So we're already working on 35, we'll see where we can go with that. I want to talk quickly just about appraisal caps and property tax. There is real talk about moving that down, it's been going on for I don't know how many sessions, way back in the early 2000s, it was being brought up regularly about reducing, putting artificial appraisal caps in, reducing property taxes in some way, either through home state exemptions or otherwise, which affects revenue for local governments. There is this concern, most of the members that are going to be sitting in the Texas legislature this year on the Republican side have all talked about supporting some sort of property tax relief somehow, some way, however it can come about. I know Dan Patrick has come in, in fact, he, before he was a senator, he came before a committee in the House and talked about appraisal caps, property taxes, he's been on that issue for years and years and years. And I think there's some sense of seriousness about what's going to happen with appraisal caps and/or some sort of property tax relief, which will affect local government. I will tell you, in California, it just decimated California, appraisal caps decimated it and I don't think it's, I, there's got to be some way that if you reduce property taxes somehow, which a lot of people want, because you're in the middle, you've got constituents who believe that the property tax relief is needed, you've got government saying, well, taxes are too high and you've still got to provide with the same constituents some sort of basis upon which to run the state, you know, local government in a quality manner. So, but California got decimated with it and quite frankly, that's really kind of kept it from being, taking place. It's come close a few times, but it hasn't really happened. Problem is that it's maybe one of those bad ideas that could actually happen in some form or fashion. TML will be fighting it, the counties will be fighting it, everybody will be fighting it who knows anything about the issue in connection with what it takes. Problem is, you've got all these people in the state of Texas who seemingly believe that you need to do something about property taxes, they're too high. So it's just a fact of life. There's also this movement to, by outside groups, and James mentioned it, to do something about local government debt. They are, they are hell-bent on trying to prevent local governments from issuing short and long-term debt and reduce that ability to do so, make it very, very difficult. Not necessarily saying you can't do it, just make it very, very difficult, almost artificially difficult. They want, for example, that minimum turnout requirements, we're a low turnout state, that's why I mentioned it, we are a low turnout state. Some local elections get a high turnout over some issue, but overall, we're a low turnout state. Ballots to include the projected cost of interest and requiring outside auditing for use of funds and James mentioned a couple of other things, those are issues being put, that is being pushed by some members, but really the outside groups, what they allegedly say they're conservative groups, pushing that, saying that people, it's too easy for local governments to raise money out of the backs of taxpayers. Well, the taxpayers get the vote on it in the local communities, but for some reason, they want the state to say you can't do it very easily. And the question will be whether or not anything can happen with that issue, either this session or even the following, this coming session or the following session. That being said, those are just a few comments I wanted to make just because I thought you needed to hear it. The landfill issue, I haven't seen the bill that Representative Simmons has filed, I do, I will tell you that I've had several conversations with him and his staff, I also have talked to Senator Nelson about it, about the fact that cities need to have comments considered, whether they're how they're weighed, whatever, but the idea that it lists out everything but the fact that comments don't have to be considered, doesn't make any sense in the health code. And I believe that she indicated that she thought that was kind of ridiculous as well, but you know, the idea with Representative Simmons and maybe Pam Parker, Representative Parker, maybe Senator Huffines who comes in who's got real estate background and also knows something about landfills and maybe a couple other senators involved, Senator Nelson and others, maybe we can get something done with TCEQ this time and with the chair or the environmental regulations in the House. I think the idea that, I do know the chairman, chairwoman very well, I think she means well, I think she wants to do the right thing, I think TCEQ had basically said, we have a problem. And this goes back to my first session, it was about streamlining the entire process and not going city to city and allowing these things to cut, run through its local governmental area to agency and not have to deal with local politics and every little thing that TCEQ needed to be done. So that was her first session as a chairwoman of that committee and so maybe this next time it'll be a little bit better. Also, that goes to the Rural Commission issue about this utility issue. This deal was, last session, there was one utility company out of Houston that basically said that we want to, in effect, break up and decimate this ratepayer issue, these ratepayer cases, we want to just work with the state to do it. We don't like all the attorneys and all these different cities involved in these ratepayer issues. So they filed bills last session, which were defeated, they didn't even get out, they didn't get out of State Affairs Committee. Those, they had two bills involving this issue. Those same two bills, they've now taken to the Rural Commission to ask them to propose rules in some way that they feel that the Rural Commission may have authority to do what the legislature wouldn't do last session. So the Rural Commission has not ruled on that, there was all the cities involved and the ratepaying attorneys that the cities hire, there's two main groups of those attorneys basically have fought that off, our own representatives wouldn't sign letters in agreement with it, even though they tried to pass around a letter saying that it ought to be done, to wait and see what happens. Well, the Rural Commission hasn't acted on that yet and may not act on it. And what may happen is that those same bills will be filed again in some form, maybe the same form, and basically then suggest a membership of both the Senate and the House, that the Rural Commission proposed rules and public comment, haven't done anything because they need guidance by the legislature as to what they want done. So I have seen the utilities do that in the past, I've seen other groups do that in the past, they can't get something first time one way, they go the other way, then they come back and they basically say, oh, well, they just need more guidance, you need to pass something to give them guidance. And let's put it under the Rural Commission and for the legislature to do that would be, it wouldn't be good for consumers and taxpayers at all. And I don't know how this will play out yet, but I wouldn't be surprised to see legislation on that again, in that context, with the idea that you go to the State Affairs Committee Chair and you go to the other, certain other members, they just need guidance. And so we'll see what happens. On some of these, I did notice, we talked about the landfill already, we'll see, we'll see what we can do with that.
It appears he filed a bill that would actually say, if we don't approve it, the Senate can't approve it.
Yeah, and I don't know why, but we'll deal with that. Bills are amendable, they can change. Anyway, he filed that bill, he may file the other bills as well, I don't know, we'll see. And there is some sense that they, you know, that if you think about it, if And there is some sense that they, you know, that if you think about it, if it's not approved by you all, by a city council, where the landfill is located, they can't even convince you guys it's a good idea. It makes some sense to say you really shouldn't be doing it, but that gets into the local politics that TCEQ does not want to deal with. So, we'll see. I will tell you that, we talked about utilities, the print advertising deal, that's been going on, I carried a bill about that. And the newspapers fight it right and left, but they're certainly eking it out where we can get more online, and the purchasing agents can get more online than not, but it's a revenue issue with the newspapers, local newspapers as well as the big newspapers. The payday lending, vehicle title lending, the industry wants a bill that preempts local government. There's five big payday lenders, and there's a couple of bigger auto titled companies. They can live with certain things that the mid-sized guys and the smaller guys can't live with. There's litigation now going on with, over payday loans and the ordinances. There's a sense that the state should probably do something, but the feds are also getting into that game. With the new Congress, I don't know how all of them will be able to be into that game, but the feds have talked about doing some things. Some states have outlawed all payday loans, and all payday lending. I'm sure we have members of the legislature that would like to see that happen, although we also have some members, both Senate and the House, would say, well, some reasonable restrictions would be pretty good. But the problem is, like in a lot of legislation, it's about the details. And the industry has lobbied effectively against it. Some people have, are not, they're not taking sides in it, they just don't know what to do. And I really think it's going to be up to the courts, to tell you the truth, to decide what powers the cities really have. If the state doesn't pass anything, the courts are going to have to really rule on how far can cities go in regulating payday loans and lending, and auto title loans. We have a state agency that does that with banking and lending in general, small loan lenders and those guys. We often probably do something at the state level, but the idea is that everybody should get to play in some form or fashion in a reasonable manner, versus just three or four big companies. Big companies want legislation in their favor, put everybody else out of business. And, I don't know, maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's a bad thing, but the idea is, legislation has never been balanced enough that you can get the entire industry, for the most part, behind one piece of legislation. And now that the cities have taken some actions, they don't want to lose that ability, but the legislators really want no city involvement. They don't want to have to go from city to city. And it really should be probably a state issue at some level. The sales tax holidays, the gun thing, don't be surprised if that passes, I'm just, we'll fight it if we can, but, you know, cities don't want it, but at the end, anything having to do with guns, guns might, you have to kind of wonder how far it will go this time. Last session, a lot of the gun legislation, there was some gun legislation, and there may be needed, there may be needed pieces of small legislation to go through, but for a lot of lenders, Tea Party members especially, ran on that sort of thing. Those are big issues. Hopefully, the Senate and the House will come, whatever gun legislation comes around, comes about, will be somewhat reasonable. The problem is, is that a lot of the gun owners think that unless it's wide open, where they carry it, any place, any place, including city government halls, hospitals, school administration buildings, any place, that somehow you're telling them what they can do with their guns, or taking their guns away from them. And I don't know how the politics of that will work out, but I think, I think everybody will be looking at that. Every group of any interest will be looking at what happens with that. Oh, the deal about open space, utility corridors, including waiver of all liability, those kind of bills have appeared before in State Affairs, probably will again. And at some point in time, the utilities just don't want any liability for it. If they allow it, they want absolutely no liability, they want it built in, period. If unless there's, there's no liability whatsoever, I mean, if it falls on you, they don't want any liability. The line breaks, electrocutes, they don't want any liability. So, but that's been, that's been up before in several, several different versions of that. Texting may very well pass again, it was, it didn't pass easily last session, but it passed, and it could, it could eventually pass this time. And the unknown will be whether or not Governor Abbott, they want to do the same thing Governor Perry did, or maybe he would say, yeah, it's a reasonable bill, and we're going to pass it, and we're going to sign it. The deal about local firearms, local police charged criminals, that, under your public safety, the bill's already filed. I mean, that's just a tip, that is just what you're going to see this session. A number of bills filed, gun bills filed, so that members can have their say about the issue, whether it be usually on the side of gun owners at this point.
Mr. Solomon?
I guess that's just fine.
Perfect. We're going to need to make sure we have enough time to cover the rest of our agenda. Would you mind staying until, if we need some more time, or are you good?
No, I'd be happy to stick around for a bit.
Appreciate your input.
I just, I'm excited about working with you all about this, I really am, and I look forward to working with Donna and you all, with Mr. James. I think we can do a good job. I think we've got shots at doing some good things, if we can just keep some bad things from happening, I'll be glad.
Great. Thank you so much.
I know you know, I think it's priceless.
Although, we will put a limit on that.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's dial that down just a bit.
That's because the state is taking so much of our money, we just can't afford it. Well, the concern for this council, and for this local government, and for local governments, cities all over the state, including counties, and including schools, are really about revenue right now. The state's growing so fast, and if the state, if state cuts back and forces fees like they did California for skyrocketing fees and sales of local taxes, that's just, that doesn't do anybody any good.
Yeah, I appreciate it. All right, well, go ahead and take a look at the agenda for tonight, so, any comments on public hearing? Consent agenda? Item one? Item two?
On item two, there is a typo in the administrative comments. Talks about reconstruction of Liveway Road, and should read Palford's Perro. You see it's done correctly in the caption, but not in the comments.
Do we need to pull that to make that clarification?
We just want to know that the caption is correct, so we don't have to pull it.
Yeah, well, the comment's one-third correct, right? Item three? Item nine? Item 10?
Julie, you can pass those around. I guess what we're passing around is part of a plan that we looked at, studied in 2009 for the Old Town Park Plaza project, and at that time, we were given three different options to choose from. And I guess it was just kind of assumed, as we were going through the process, and you'll see, most of these pictures, most of these designs, that the entire plaza project was being referred to as the Wayne Ferguson Plaza. And then it came to my attention recently that it, that we actually didn't officially name it the Wayne Ferguson Plaza. What we did name the Wayne Ferguson Plaza was the spot, space just to the left, or just to the east of Subway, which is...
The courtyard there.
The courtyard. So I was, for years, kind of under the impression that the entire plaza was going to be the Wayne Ferguson Plaza, and I found out that it wasn't. So, to actually get it to be named that, we do, council does have to take action, similar to the action that we took for Railroad Park, when we officially took action to name that. Now, there has been some talk of getting a sponsorship for the plaza.
Naming rights.
Naming rights. And we can still certainly do that. I mean, this could be the JC commercial Wayne Ferguson Plaza, you know, any sponsor that we, that we could get, and it's still...
Just like we did Railroad Park.
Just like we did Railroad Park. So, that's that. And I think, I mean, without a doubt, everybody knows Wayne Ferguson, and we can talk about his legacy forever, and what he means to this community, and I think it's only fitting to name this entire plaza the Wayne Ferguson Plaza.
I think there was an expectation and a belief that that's what would be done, and certainly this just reflected that that was the expectation and the belief.
Right, and it's a public document that was out there, and yes, it was.
Definitely created a particular impression, I know it did for me. Can I get staff's feedback? Has there been any movement or any takers on naming rights for this facility?
There have not. We have actually created a packet, and we've mailed that out to several different entities. To date, we've really not found any that have wanted to move forward on that. And we can continue to work it. I mean, I can't tell you that we've dedicated a great deal of staff time to this. If you'll remember, when we did naming rights on Railroad Park, which was very successful, we actually hired a consultant that was paid a commission from the naming rights dollars that we received. So, we have spent some time, we have targeted several, and we'll continue to do that as we see appropriate corporations. This is, has more challenges, I think, than Railroad Park did. It's all based on a number of impressions. It is advertising for that corporation, and so I think Toyota Louisville Park offered many opportunities for advertising, where the park plaza, I think, is different in that respect. But you might find a local entity that thinks that that would be very beneficial as far as advertising. So we will continue to pursue that, just as we have in the past.
I think it'd be an entertaining carrot for economic development as well. If not a revenue generator, then a way to say, hey, if you came to our city, we would brand this.
And that's very true. Yeah, the other opportunity is to combine that with the Western Days Festival. So, and that is how we packaged it on several occasions, is jointly with Western Days. And so, we'll continue to pursue that.
So, it's just clear to me, you're talking about the wall that faces the MCL Grand? Actually, I guess it's the bank wall at the current time?
Right. That, and I'm not sure, in these plans, there was another signage, well...
There's signage actually, already between Subway and the bridal shop, there's signage there, and then you have the large sign that Councilman Vaughn is describing, that will have the name, it's going to be two areas.
And then there was another one listed, kind of central on the north side, right in front of City Hall? I don't know if that's still...
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a grand, it's a grand, okay.
Yeah, same.
That's the one on the west side.
Yeah, that's the one by the bank.
One by the bank.
That's the one by the bank. That's the one piece of concrete I don't think has been reported.
Not yet.
That's not yet.
Okay.
I said it was great.
Any other comments, questions, concerns on this? All right, well, Mr. Furt, or we'll leave that, Mr. Turney will leave that to you to bring up and go from there. Item 11, that looks like everything I've got. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Solomons? I bought you about 11 more minutes if you need them.
I don't, I probably talked too much. I had, kind of tended to do that anyway before. No, I just, I'm excited about the session, I'm excited about what you guys want to do. I think that the politics and the landscape is so different this time. Almost all sessions have different dynamics, and this one really is different in that complex. It's not just which issues are under the forefront, but you can already see some of the issues, hot topics from the pre-filing. But this session is so much different than anything we've seen in a while, a while, over a decade. I mean, we have new governor, new statewide officials, new Attorney General, including new Attorney General, different staff shifting around, it's just going to be a different tone this time. So I think everybody needs to kind of buckle in a little bit, and just kind of be patient, and just see where we'll go. And I think there's going to be some shuffling of chairmanships in the House, because of turnover. I think there's going to be shuffling of, some shuffling in the Senate with all the chairmanships. So everybody needs to kind of just, there's a sense that as a session will approach, people will just have real, real tense, and I think everybody needs to just see what happens first. You know, just buckle in, and just kind of go through. Sessions tend to have the same sort of dynamic to a point, and then everything breaks loose. So we'll see. But anyway, thank you for letting me work with you.
I might mention, I think you've all received the flyer on Ditten County Days, and one thing, we'll be working with Burt to set up meetings with appropriate legislators, depending on the topics that we focus on at the time. So when we look at that handout that James presented earlier, we'll want to make sure that's fine tuned before we go to Austin. We'll do what we've done in the past, we'll try to, I think you're all signed up, I believe, to attend Ditten County Days, from what Judy told me. And so we'll likely divide up into a couple of groups, and target whomever is appropriate for the topics that, certainly, our landfill bill will be one that we'll be pursuing, and we'll want appropriate representatives there. So, that would be the plan for Ditten County Days.
Do you want to get these to you, or to...
No, I don't need them. You can go ahead and hang on to them, and just let me know if you want to. I thought you emailed them.
Yeah, I mean, fill it out, register and all that stuff. You going to do all that?
If there's anything else that I need you to do, or, no, I'll take care, I'll take care of all of them.
I'll tell them, okay.
We'll all take care of them.
You just need to know where's...
Do you'd like to?
If you need to do any sweet shopping, there's a nice one.
Anything else?
I might mention, I did have an email from Representatives.
Hold on, hold on.
I did have an email from Representative Simmons, and he would like to meet with us, and so especially now that we've seen this bill, I'll be setting something up, so if one of you would like to attend that meeting, or several of you, I'll get that information out.
I assume that I would.
All right, fair enough. That, we'll adjourn the workshop and...
I need these back.